Brendan Weest, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, man. Good. Thank you for coming. I know it's a schlep out from Caldwell, but hopefully you didn't get stuck in any traffic.
Just construction. I didn't even realize. I was like, hey, I'll take Chindon and then go out to forty-four. Nah, both Chindon and forty-four all tore up.
Yeah, dude, it's somebody the I had Diana Register on from Caldwell City Council recently, and she was talking about how like one day she had to use her cellphone to figure out a way to get home because there's so much construction. It's like, dude, the growth is so wild and well, you guys aren't ACHD, but you know, especially within Ada County, ACHD is just, they're on a terror, man. All of downtown Eagle has been torn up forever. And you know, it is what it is. Anyway, listen, you're running for mayor of Caldwell.
City council.
City council, my apologies. C one. My apologies. For some reason I thought it was mayor. Anyway, back to this, you're running for city council. Talk to me about why you're running for city council.
So I participated or I helped participate a little bit with the recall that we had that Caldwell was trying to put together. I just didn't like the way a lot of the things that were happening in Caldwell were happening. And I was sitting down with the, or I was talking to the mayor candidate Eric Phillips. And he was just like, a couple of his people that had been with him for a while were like, hey, you seem like a smart guy. You should run. And I said, nah, 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 you know, that's not for me. And then about a week went by and kind of just kept pounding and I said, you know what? I think maybe I could put something instead of just sitting back here complaining and not having a voice. I probably could do something. I've never been in politics. So I was just like, hey, why not give it a shot? I've had fourteen and a half years in the military, so I think my leadership capability is there. And then when COVID hit, I helped a disaster organization that I currently volunteer with. We put together a team. We had some COVID money. So during COVID, I was getting paid as a, as a team leader. We went into the VA hospital. We helped out with their COVID tent when they were screening patients as they were coming in and out. And then we got asked to go into the Idaho Food Bank. They needed some help because a lot of their volunteers were over fifty. And because of COVID, all the over fifties had to pull out. And so we did that for about a day and then the Idaho Food Bank decided, hey, we don't need as much help as we thought we did. We have a lot of young people coming in from like the college Boise State in Idaho. And so we didn't need it. And so they got me in contact with the St. Vincent Food Pantry on Overland. And they had everybody was over fifty minus the store, the pantry manager. And so I took a team of, I think it was eight that we took to there. And we started a lot of things with them. And in twenty twenty two, three, twenty twenty-two, the pantry manager quit. And so the director of operations for St. Vincent came and said, hey, we're gonna have to end up closing the pantry. So I guess we'll just, you know, this will be your last day, whatever. And I was like, hey, I've been here for three years. Why don't I help you out? Why don't I want you to hire me as your manager? So they did. And so I managed until February of this year. I managed their food bank.
Yes, you do. This is a lot of stuff here, my guy.
Yeah.
Understood. So taking all this into consideration, you know, obviously it sounds like that you have a, a big group of supporters saying, hey, look, you'd be great. What are, what are things you feel like you could bring to the council? I mean, obviously leadership, but like, what are the issues, right? Because nobody runs just for funsies. It's like, no, you gotta run because you have a problem, right? Like obviously involved in the recall. Can you explain the whole recall? Because again, people have talked to me about it, but I haven't, I've never, I never dove into it to really get it. But there was a recall effort with almost all of the, with the mayor and the city council, correct?
Correct.
And I think it was, was it councilwoman Diana Register was ultimately the one that was not in the final recall?
Her and Councilman Chuck Stadick.
Okay, right. What was the recall?
So the recall was going after a few of the council members that just seemed to, and the mayor, who seemed to just be approving things at an exponentially high rate. And they, a lot of the city, a lot of this, you know, the residents in Caldwell just were unhappy. As far as from what I was told and had seen, they had almost all the signatures, if not just enough. But they were happy, they were hoping to have a few hundred extra because of the ones that, you know, the county would throw out. And they just didn't feel confident enough that they would have with the amount of signatures that they did have, which I think, like I said, was just enough. They didn't want to submit without having the extra in case so and so's name got thrown out because they weren't a, you know, city resident or not a registered voter or whatever.
So it was really the, the motive though was, hey, look, we don't, we don't, we, the residents don't approve with how you, the city council and mayor are approving. Was it commercial development? Was it residential development? What, what were they approving?
I think a lot of it, I think kind of what broke the camel's back there was the Marriott Hotel going into the rodeo dirt lot at the fairgrounds there, there in town.
Gotcha.
It was being utilized by, you know, the College of Idaho Yotes, the fair, the rodeo, you know, X, Y, and Z. And it was being rented out at, I think they, I think I, I've read a couple of times, it said something about fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Something was what the city was being paid between all the entities that were utilizing that lot. And they ended up telling those entities, hey, we're, we're gonna sell to Marriott to let them have their hotel here. And they're paying like fifty bucks a year. I mean, you know, comparable. It's just like, that didn't make too much sense. You know, we're making all kinds of money. We're making fifty-five thousand dollars a year. And then you want to sell to Marriott who's not going to build for a little while and you're going to sell to him for.
Gotcha.
And it just made a lot of people upset.
And did they sell the land or they leased it? They're leasing it to the Marriott?
I think they leased it initially, but now, I mean, I live right there by that. It's, there's, they're being built. I mean, it's, there's, I don't know, it's probably structurally, structurally, I'd say it's probably about a fourth ton, maybe half.
Gotcha.
Of, of just the outside structure, not of.
Right. And this, and the city maintains ownership of the lot, but the Marriott's building on it, right? So it's one of those property or land lease options or something.
Something, yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha. If you were involved in the recall around the hotel, I'm assuming you did not agree with the, with the, with the building of the hotel and leasing to Marriott.
Correct.
And that's because, is it just a financial consideration, which is, look, the city was making fifty-ish thousand dollars a year? Or is it, like, what is it about the hotel that you didn't like?
You know, there's several. My kids went to Valley View High and Ridgeview, the new high school out there in, in the Valley View School District. And so we know a lot of people that are 4H, FFA, that kind of thing. And, you know, hearing them talk on their Facebook and hearing and in person, hearing a lot of those parents and, and kids talking about, oh, now I gotta, you know, walk my goat or my horse, my cow across the railroad tracks. Because that's where the city's telling us to park is the new parking lot, just off of the fairgrounds, over the railroad tracks. And they were just like, that just isn't gonna work. You know, my eight-year-old kid or ten-year-old kid or even high schooler walking their, you know, goat or horse or cow across the railroad tracks was just like, how's that gonna work when a train comes and starts blowing their horns and spooks the animal? Like, it just didn't make a lot of sense. And the city's like, well, they can just, you know, they can drop off of the door and then go repark and, okay, but what if they need to do something? Like, it just didn't make a lot of sense. So that was one of them. And the other one is we have a few hotels in Caldwell. I live right by at least two of them, right off the freeway. And I rarely see them where they're full. Maybe if there's a, you know, College Idaho Yotes game or a big state tournament or something, they might be pretty full. I think it was more multiple things than it was just one. And I think that's where the city had the same problem, the residents.
Gotcha. So you feel like, one, the functionality for the community got taken away. And then, two, there's a question of even necessity. It's like, look, we already have places where people can stay and they're not very full.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha. Another, another hot button item, at least it seems for some people, was the parking meters, right? And the parking downtown. What do you think about that?
Yeah, I, I agreed with a lot of the residents at the time. You know, being, being how small Caldwell still is, I saw a lot of posts and talking to a lot of folks who, you know, were saying, we're not a big city. We're not Boise. We're not, you know, we're not this or that. I didn't think the parking meters made that much sense. I mean, even businesses were saying, hey, this is gonna push a lot of my business out. People aren't gonna want to park and come into my business, pay to park and come into my business. So I think a lot of people were up in arms about that as well. And that, that might have been kind of been the bend to send it down as we started. And then the rodeo thing happened right, right? Close after that. And it was like, okay, you know, XYZ happened and then now XYZ happened. And now we're really frustrated. And this is where we're at. We're gonna start this recall thing.
Gotcha. Talk to me about businesses downtown and economic growth within, within Caldwell. Obviously you have Indian, Indian, excuse me, yeah, Indian Creek Plaza.
Indian Creek.
Yeah, yeah. And that's a huge success, right? Like, obviously Destination Caldwell's this huge push. And you know, continuing people coming down, continuing improving the city, right, including roads, which is very difficult. But improving it so that that economy keeps growing in Caldwell. Like, I'm interviewing a bunch of people from Nampa, both city council mayoral candidates. Everybody's jealous of Indian Creek Plaza, like everybody. I was like, oh, man, only I had a girl like that. Yeah, it's, it's great. You know, how do you keep building, building on that?
I think that's tough. I mean, obviously you, we always want to make, do, do things that will help the community in general. So that's bringing jobs. It's keeping, keeping up with the aesthetics that we already have down there. I mean, because they have done a phenomenal job. I, I spent a lot of time down in Indian Creek with my family. I mean, there's a splash pad for my grandkids. So we're always down the splash pad like all summer long. The restaurants, we love a lot of the restaurants down there. There's new ones coming in all the time. So we're always checking those things out. I think it's a lot of that and just having, you know, I go down there and I, I look around when people are out there, like on a Friday or Saturday night. You know, people were sitting at the tables laughing and joking and having a good time. And I think that is where you have to look at things and say, this is what we want for Caldwell. We want it to be family inviting, family friendly. And you just kind of go with that and just keep playing down, you know, playing down that path.
Gotcha. Do you think there are a lot of, any collaborations or specific events or things of that nature that, that could be integrated into it? Or that are, that are, you know, could be better, better organized?
I don't know. I, I mean, I just attended Indian Creek Festival this weekend. They did a cardboard boat race in the creek, which was pretty phenomenal and awesome and funny to watch.
Did you put a boat in?
No, my, my son-in-law did.
Yeah. Lot of duct tape?
Lot of duct tape. I think, I think he said they spent like, all the cardboard was free. They got it from somewhere.
Yeah, but it's the tape.
Two hundred bucks in tape or something. It was like crazy.
Make the holes legit out of like, you get the cardboard to shape it and then you're just like, wrap it up, man.
Yeah. Yeah, him and his brother-in-law did a boat. I guess now, now next year, he's like, you gotta come with us. And I'm like, let's do it. Let's build like a big old tank or something. We'll put a big tank in there.
Put, make like a catamaran or a trimaran. Like, get multiple holes going and PVC pipes and everything. Like, just make it wild.
I don't know if you're signing the photos, but there was a guy had a, he made an Etch A Sketch boat. So it was flat, but it was humongous. I mean, it took up like the whole creek. And his idea, I talked to him and his, his idea was, nobody's gonna pass me.
But you gotta make it down the creek.
But he's gotta make it down the creek and it fell apart, partway through. But he also didn't keep in mind, like at the push off, when they push you off, like people got in front of him and then he, then he couldn't make the pass.
Yeah, he's not passing anyone either.
So it was, he was like, I talked to Matt Ward and he was like, dang it. I didn't even think about that.
You should have, you should take a page out of like Moana, like design boats like the Kakamora, right? So it's like the boat comes apart and you like stretch out, take up more of the creek and then it comes back together. Like, you could paddle really hard and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, no, Destination Caldwell does a good job putting those events on them. And they, you know, a lot of thought, a lot of planning goes into those.
And the cardboard, honestly, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just, I'm so enamored with, the reason I ask specifically about that is I had a Nampa candidate come in, just like unrelated, like different city, but he had a lot of ideas that in retrospect, I started thinking about, I was like, you know, it doesn't take that much money. Like, that's not a money intense thing. That's like a collect the people and have a vision thing. And looking at Indian Creek, the, the cardboard boat race, it's like, that's identical. Like, could you do something that brings the people together that's fun? That like people, you get like a lot of social media cred out of like, everybody's recording. And you just, it's like, what's the cost? It's like, like the, the hardware store is happy. They sold out of duct tape, you know, it's like, the businesses are happy. Everybody took their cardboard. And then you have these hilarious memories of like, dude, next year I'm coming back hard. All the businesses are there. And again, that's just such a beautiful, you know, smart way to utilize this, obviously natural resource like creek. But like utilizing it in such a funny way where it's like, oh my gosh, this was hilarious and great. And did it really like cost the city a lot of money? Probably not. Like, I don't know all the details, but I don't know. I'm just really taken by that. So is there anything else like that hanging out there for you?
Not necessarily. I mean, I am kind of an event guy. I love, I love doing those community type events. And so if I ever thought of something, it definitely would be something I would a hundred percent bring to the table. And have, you know, put the idea out there and let people decide if it's something we should do. I do like those events. I mean, we just did, the wife and I went down, they did a pre-rodeo, pre-Caldwell night rodeo on the plaza. So they did like lion dancing lessons half an hour before. There was a live band on, I mean, that was awesome. I went over, there was a brand new restaurant that just opened up. And I was in there talking to the guy, putting my order in. And I, I won't forget it because he was, I was telling him where we were sitting. He was gonna deliver our food out to us, to our, our seats. And I was just like, this is, this vibe is awesome. And look at all the people dancing and having fun singing along to the music. I mean, that's what, that's how I see our city continuing. Just that camaraderie, that family environment, that family, you know, culture, getting together, having a good time. And, you know, the policemen were out there and they were kind of dancing around. Like, you know, it was just a good time. It was like, everybody was having a phenomenal time.
Was Rex out there doing the lion dancing? I bet he was. Talk to me about law enforcement. That's another, that's another big thing in Caldwell that people are, you know, well, just talk to me about law enforcement.
You know, I haven't, I've been watching what's happening. And like I said, I'm not super political when it comes to this stuff, so I'll do my best. But I, you know, I, I served, when I served in the military, I was law enforcement. So I was a police officer in the air force. They call it security forces. So we did, we did all the base security plat slash policing. So we were doing traffic stops. We were writing tickets. We were, you know, putting people in handcuffs if, if needed. And so I do get a little bit of a backend aspect on that, I guess, if you will. It, I mean, there is a lot of things happening. The, one of the Caldwell police officers was just found not guilty of all his stuff here recently. I, you know, I don't know if I have the answer that some of the residents probably would be looking for when it comes to that, because I don't know how much city council has a say in a lot of that stuff. And I don't know. I mean, it's one of those tough ones. It's like, I don't know if I have an answer, but guess what? If I don't have the answer, I'm gonna find somebody who does and try to get the answer to, for whoever was asking the information. Like, you know, if it's going to the mayor or if it's going to the county, maybe because maybe they're over the Caldwell's, you know, I don't know. I'll figure it out. If I don't have the answer, I will, I'm definitely willing to do the digging and figure it out and get to the bottom of it.
Well, let me ask you this. Just in what you're saying, you don't have the answer. What's the problem? Because I just said, talk to me about law enforcement. You're like, I don't have the answer. I'm like, I didn't, I didn't say there was a problem.
Yeah. There's just, I mean, it's a lot of the, it's a lot of things. I mean, it's like, I know, I know, I know one instance, like the incoming, not the incoming mayor, incoming mayor candidate that's running against Doty and Mayor Wagner. He was a police officer. He was in the Caldwell schools as a SRO is the way I read it. And I know that like, like he was kind of pushed in the back, if you will. There was just some kind of, seemed like some dirty things, obviously the stuff in the news that we've seen with some of the officers and the chief of police. I think you just have.
To be clear, just, and again, I don't know all of this either. Have there been convictions? Because the only judgment, like there are a lot of things hit the news, right? And I was actually talking with Councilwoman Diana Register about this. Like, look, are we at a state in our culture where accusation or allegation carries as much weight as judgment? Right? Like, do we still believe in our judicial system? Or do we just believe that if somebody is accused of something, we don't actually care about what happens? And again, I don't know the answer to this. And I'm, I'm not a Caldwell resident. I'm not, you know, I'm just trying to figure out because we, we've experienced throughout the country a large shift towards, okay, if somebody gets accused, it must be true. And then it's like, well, well, what if it's not? Right? So what I'm trying to flesh out when people talk about Caldwell Police Department, it's like, okay, I understand there have been allegations. Has anybody been convicted or have, have they been found guilty based on those allegations?
Not to my knowledge, my knowledge. Everybody, I think, has been found not guilty thus far. Which obviously that, you know, could prove or could not prove a point. You know, if, I know like this, I think the last, the last officer that just like last week was found not guilty. I think his was from the Supreme Court. I think his case went all the way to Supreme Court. So, you know, you kind of, sometimes you have to look at those things and go, well, maybe there wasn't anything. But I don't know, because I haven't looked at all of the, I haven't looked at all the things.
Sure. And obviously there was nothing, there was not enough for the Supreme Court to find that person guilty, right? So if there's like a smoking gun, you would presume. And that's not to say that like, look, we all saw the OJ trial. It's like, that's not, you know, I'm not saying anybody's like OJ in Caldwell, but you know, it, it, it's just, it's curious to me because this is something that's kind of evolving on the fly. And it's like, okay, so where does Idaho stand, right? And you don't speak for Idaho, but it, it's just a question that I have of these communities, which is, does anybody actually care about the nuance of allegation versus conviction? Or is the allegation sufficient?
I mean, that's a great question. I, I think, I think there probably are a few people that just don't care. Or they just go, well, you know, Supreme Court said not guilty. And that's just what we're gonna believe. But I think there are those, those people out there also who say, you know, maybe they weren't found guilt, guilty, but I'm still not sure I'm a hundred percent convinced based off of, you know, XYZ, what I saw, what I witnessed, what I.
And then it comes down to what? Can you prove?
Correct. Yep. And so I think there's, there's a lot, you know, in the legal system in general, there's just a lot that goes into a case and trying to get somebody guilty or not guilty. And so I just think that when it comes to that, you know, everybody's gonna, you're, you're not gonna get something right down the middle. It's just, no, not everybody's ever gonna be happy with the outcome. So.
Well, talk to me about budgeting and supply of law enforcement, right? Obviously, it sounds like I had a, I had Councilman Stadick on and he was very positive about the progress the Caldwell Police Department has made as far as, you know, violent crimes, things of that nature. Do you think the police need more resources? Do you think they're sufficiently staffed and resourced? Do you think there's enough funding?
You know, I, I'm not, one of those things I haven't dug into super deep. I, because I was a police officer, I do have some a little background and a little, my, you know, my, my, my tinglers go off, if you will, when it comes to that kind of thing. Cause I'm like, huh, I wonder. I've been attending city council meetings since I decided to run. I thought, you know, probably a good idea to start attending meetings and see how they go. And so I've been attending or watching every single one online. We just attended the last meeting and I was actually pretty surprised. One of the captains of Caldwell Police Department came up and he was asking for, I think like 1.8 million dollars for some equipment. And he explained each item. One was some sort of, it sounded awesome. A drone or two that sit out, sit on top of a building throughout the city. There's a few strategically placed. And they can be the first responder to anything, a car accident, a domestic, a whatever. And I was like, wow, that kind of piques my interest, you know, having a drone be the first responder. And I guess the way they look at it is it can be the first eyes on the scene.
I was gonna say, you could get eyes real fast.
Real fast. Yeah, they say within like, I think, I can't remember exactly. I don't want to misquote it. But it was quick. I mean, it was like within a few seconds where, where they haven't planned to be strategically placed. It was like, wow, that could be a game changer.
Idaho Power actually uses something similar. I don't know if it's the same thing, but they, they have drones set up at their like transmission lines at a bunch of different areas that are in this. It looks like, what was that thing from Robocop? You know, that big giant robot that like the Robocop had to finally take out? You know, it's like one of those, right? Anyway, it was like the two thousand something. It doesn't matter, but the point is they sit in that thing. And then if there's an outage or if there are problems or if they're, whatever it is, that, that guy takes off automatically and goes and checks the line. Now, of course, people come back, you know, going back through and like, you know, double checking and everything. So there is a human element, obviously. But there's that instantaneous like, then those drones, like they hustle, man. And they have, you know, high quality, high quality cameras and stuff. There is a whole lot of value to getting eyes on the scene, to know what you're dealing with more quickly than, than not. Yeah.
Yep. I know a lot of ISP officers, chiefs of police, all since my military service. A lot of those guys that were in my units are, you know, have continued their law enforcement career in the civilian world. So I know how valuable that, something like that could be. They were talking about new body cameras along with the drones and some other equipment. And I was just like, that seems like a good use of money. I mean, to me, that makes a lot of sense to have that. So I think, I think for Caldwell, I think, I know he said they were understaffed. I would have to believe somebody that does it every day, that feels like they're understaffed. But I also, he was saying that, like, these drones can make a difference in that understaffed.
You stretch your resources. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because he was saying, you know, instead of having one officer have to be in this area, one in this area, one in this area, one in this area. The drone could go and be that, be the eyes and ears first. And with the person operating it, and then they can call that in and say, this is what's happening. So.
Dude, how wild would that be? If everywhere there's like a call, like in forty seconds, like hovering over you?
I mean, he gave, he was given some examples of, of what it could do. And he was talking about domestic, how he could, how it could go in there, you know, it could drive, you know, fly in there and like fly right up to the perpetrator or whatever the suspect and be like, you know, they could talk to him through the, like, I was just like, what on earth are we doing here? This is crazy.
Living in the future, baby. This is crazy.
But that, I mean, I could see how, you know, instead of having, instead of having to deploy all these people and all these, you know, vehicles and stuff, I, like, I could definitely see a value there.
Yeah, yeah. And again, stretching resources, right? Because then you don't need, you know, you have a response time, sort of response, different type of response, but you have a response. Talking about infrastructure, roads, what are we thinking? This is a hot, hot mess.
It's a hot, hot topic. I mean, like I said, you know, me coming here, you know, the roads are just brutal, I think everywhere. But Caldwell in particular, you know, they are always doing things, are always putting in new subdivisions, new building, buildings, excuse me. And it's, I don't think you're, this is one for sure. You're never gonna make everybody happy on. It's, you know, to have growth, you're gonna have road construction. I know there's parts of the city, like I know they just, they just denied a project at Homedale and Montana. I think a lot of it was because of infrastructure. A lot of the current councilmen declined it because of how they came at it with that. So, you know, I don't know if they fixed that issue, if they'll, if they'll reapprove that project or not, but it's one of those things that, I mean, with how fast it's growing, I mean, I look, I've, I've lived out there since nineteen ninety-nine, my grandpa and my grandma lived out there. My grandpa had Agent Orange from Vietnam. And so I moved out there to be closer to grandma because we knew he was gonna pass soon. And so I've seen it from the boulevard, looking, you know, driving to their house down Napa Caldwell Boulevard. I used to just see dealerships everywhere. And now it's restaurant and dealerships. And then it's all of a sudden restaurant dealerships and D and B supplies and things like that. And so I think to have the growth that we need to have as a city, you're gonna have some pains with infrastructure, but I don't know that they do the best job thinking ahead on infrastructure and getting it, putting the infrastructure in first before we add. And so I think that's one of my topics is, I think things can be done a little better. But, I mean, I don't know, because I'm not in the construction business either. So I don't know how all that plays out. But I'm really hoping that my leadership capabilities get me into this position. But I'm really hoping, uh, that my leadership capabilities get me into this position. And my knowledge, basic knowledge of this, that and the other can, you know, I'm like a dreshmo of everything. I kinda hope that I can, Jack of all trades. I'm, I'm hoping that I can get in there and just, I, I'm, I'm literally ready to jump in, get my hands dirty, figure out everything, learn on the fly and help these, uh, residents out the best that I think I can. Uh, like I said, I'm not a politician. I've, I've been reached out to already by a bunch of, uh, builders and builder organizations. And they're like, hey, come on down and come.
We really like your platform. Yeah. We'd love for you to just, you know, we, we wanna get, do you have time tomorrow? Can, can we take you out to lunch? Could we, we'd love to talk to you about all the really exciting opportunities that Caldwell has in front of it. And we just wanna make sure that we help Caldwell as much as possible.
Yeah. Yeah. Until they, until they sit down with me and they heard my stance and they were like, uh, I'm not sure you're our guy.
No, we're not paying for that lunch. You're buying your own burger.
Like, I'm just not like, you know, I guess in the world of politics, you know, I can't be bought. I'm not, that's not what I'm about. I, I mean, I have, I think I've gotten $200 for my campaign donation so far. Uh, I use that to buy my yard signs. So like, I, I mean, I literally turned around, spent it, got my yard signs. Uh, I have zero dollars in my account. You can look on the state's website. Like, I don't have money. I am, I, we have our candidate forum on Thursday night at the Caldwell City Hall in the, uh, council chambers. And I'm gonna go and I'm gonna spend my own money and buy my little flyers to put on my table. I, I thought it was gonna be super important. At first I turned down the table. I said, nah, I don't need a table. And the more I thought about it, I was like, nah, I do need a table. I need to put something out there for the people that come. Cause my name is not out there yet a whole ton. And the reason it's not is just because I don't have the money. I, you know, I, I'm looking at these guys' accounts on the state's website and I'm going.
Oh, the Sunshine Report?
Yeah. And I'm going, woof. Man, if I had that kinda money, my name would be out there. But I, but I don't. And so.
You're probably not hitting up your mom and all your neighbors. Yeah. How funny. I have a friend who, uh, ran for Congress in like, somewhere back east, right? Um, a buddy from college, right? And he hit me and, and he was, we're on the rowing team together. He hit every single person on the rowing team up for money for his campaign. And like, awesome, man. Like you're doing your part, you know, you're, you're running, whether or not I agree with your ideas. I, I appreciate that you're participating in the political process, the whole thing.
Yeah.
But it always killed me. It's like, bro, I'm not hitting you up for like money for a new shirt to go to a job interview. I just, it's one of those things where you're, you're like, wait, what are you doing? Like, why am I paying you for this? So I, I would imagine you're probably not hammering the fundraising as hard as some people too.
Yeah. And I don't wanna, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna be that guy who's gonna go to my family and be like, hey, I need 500 bucks for this.
Go to your mom, like, go to your cousin. I've got this really exciting opportunity to turn my community around. I'd love your support.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and things like that are so hard. And so I don't wanna be like, like, like that guy, you know, quote unquote. And, and so I'm just, I'm just, I'm really just flying by the seat of my pants when it comes to that. Uh, but I think with, you know, I'm kinda teaming up with like Eric Phillips and some of those guys. And I know they have a lot of followings. And I'm not banking on them getting my votes by any means. But, uh, but I am hoping that, you know, us coming together as a group, like Chuck Stadak and Diana Register and Eric Phillips and myself, I'm hoping that we can, uh, create, create a big enough wave and show that we are the ones that want change for Caldwell, that it'll work out in our favor.
Here's a question for you. The growth in the abstract, I don't think any, well, some people want no one else to ever move in. That's fine, whatever. No big deal.
Yeah.
But usually when people talk about growth, they get really frustrated by growth paying for growth, right? Because HB three eighty-nine from a few years back really hampered taxing districts ability to, uh, you know, grow, especially in light of the inflation rate that we've experienced. So do you think growth is paying for growth?
I do, uh, and I, we were just talking about the, you know, the, uh, developers and stuff trying to get ahold of me. I have a couple interviews. I'm sure it's not gonna pan out because of the way I feel. So, uh, when I was at Ridgeview, when my kids were at Ridgeview, we were on, we helped out. Actually, we helped, uh, we helped campaign for the new school. So we were doing door knocking and door-to-door campaign, trying to get people to, uh, agree to, to vote for the levy that we were gonna put on the ballot. Um, and so we did a lot of that. And then when that happened, then we want, we, I got on the baseball board and we had to get approvals because we wanted to put lights in and, you know, all the stuff that goes along with the stadium, the football complex and all that. You have to get all that approved. And so I've dealt with a little bit of, of that aspect of things. And I, I don't know, I just, I feel like schools struggle. I mean, they do, they, you know, you try to do a levy. And like you say, you know, there's a lot of people that are just like, absolutely no way. They don't have kids or whatever. They don't understand that some of those levies and, and things are important. Um, you, I remember, again, you're not gonna make everybody happy. You're just gonna have to just roll with it. And I think, I think, uh, growth paying for growth is where you have to be. I mean, do I think builders and everybody should pay a hundred percent of that? No. But do they? Because I think if a builder is paying, helping pay for some of that growth, are they not putting in part of the cost of the home and the property? I'm sure they are. So I think, I think as long as it's, as long as it's level on both ends, I don't see how you could go wrong.
Gotcha. Um, we're hitting a lot of, a lot of topics. Is there anything you wanna hit on that we've missed so far?
No, I don't think so. I mean, like I said, I'm not, you know, I'm not a deep pockets kinda guy. I'm a disabled veteran. Uh, between February and my decision in May to run for city council seat one, uh, I was just sitting at home, you know, fishing every day, what a disabled veteran does, I guess. Uh, I enjoy fishing a lot, so.
Fishing every day. That sounds fantastic.
I freaking love fishing. It just, it gets me in my zen. It puts me in my place, but.
Dude, it's the nothing bucket. It's like, you've heard that comic bit. Yeah, like the, the nothing bucket. It's, it's really funny. I've, I've started, uh, I don't get to go fishing every day, but I've intentionally started carving out time. I have three boys, right? We run pretty hot. And, uh, it's like, dude, the nothing bucket. Like it just give me, like, give me a nothing. We do, uh, yeah, which is, I have an appreciation for that.
I've got a lot of friends or a few good friends that are veterans that we go fishing and take our boats out, take our wives out and stuff, but, uh, but no, prior to that, I was just at home. So like I said, I'm not, you know, I've never had a political position short of being on like a PTO board or, you know, something like that. But I really feel like my leadership capabilities uh, and my street knowledge, if you will, will help me get through this position, help me get this position and help me, uh, create something that Caldwell is looking for. I, I really feel like, I guess maybe circling back a little bit to what you were asking me earlier. You were asking me about, do I see, do I see things that I want to see for Caldwell? Like, is there some, some kind of event or something like that? I guess I, now that I think about it, there might be one or two things where I say, yeah, I think we should have kinda like town hall meetings. What do you guys see? What are, what are your, like, this is what we're planning? You know, maybe the next city council meeting, this is what we're gonna talk about. How do you guys feel about that? I know they do like the open, you know, you come in and, but maybe getting the community involved more is just exactly what Caldwell, Caldwell is looking for.
Yeah, I got you. Well, listen, man, we hit a lot. We hit a lot. I, I dig what you're saying. Um, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we have that much more. We talked about infrastructure. We talked about growth, law enforcement, you know, specific things downtown. It's a big gig. It's a big gig running, running for one of these. Um, the, the campaigns alone seem to really wear on people. So, you know, you could've stayed on the couch or fishing with your friends. So I, I really appreciate that you are running. You know, I'm obviously not a Caldwell resident, but I mean, it seems like Caldwell has a lot of good choices.
Yeah. That's what I'm hoping for is Caldwell just has a lot of choices and people can get out, you know, instead of just having like, no opposition to certain position. You know, it's nice to have those, you know, four or five people running for a position. So you have, just put your, put your information together. That's all we're asking.
You have, you have options for sure. Well, listen, man, thanks for what you're doing. Good luck with your campaign. Thanks for coming in and sharing it. And, uh, yeah, we'll do it again.
All right. Sounds great.